Good afternoon and welcome to this committee meeting of the Communities Parks and Leisure Policy Committee. I am Richard Williams, a member for Stanington and Chair of this committee. We don't have anybody in the public gallery but we will probably have people watching on the webcast. Somebody is desperately trying to get in through the door. Anyway, we'll crack on. The meeting today is open to the public. We have received no petitions from the public and several questions from one member of the public. Please may I request that you turn off mobile phones and other such equipment that might disturb the conduct of the meeting. There is no fire test planned for today. If there is an emergency evacuation, please take instruction from the town hall staff. The assembly point is Tudor Square. Could I now ask you, each member of the committee, to introduce themselves?
Yeah, councillor Alan Hooper, councillor for West Ecclesfield Ward.
Councillor Rob Rice, councillor for the East Ecclesfield Ward.
Councillor Tony Downing, councillor for Mosborough Ward.
Councillor Karen McGowan for Burley Ward.
Councillor Janet Riddler for Stockbridge and Upper Don and Labour Group spokesperson.
Councillor Kelly Weatherall, Shire Green, Brightside Ward.
Councillor Bernard Little, Borkley Ward, Green Party.
Marion Elliott, Green councillor for Gleanes Valley.
Thank you very much. Do we have any apologies for absence? I don't think so because I can see you all here. Okay, fair enough. Item two, exclusion, exclusion of the public and press. There are no items that have been identified where resolutions may be moved to exclude press or public. Item three is declarations of interest. Do any members wish to declare an interest in any of the items of the business today? That's a resounding no, thank you. Minutes of the previous meeting, which was on the 12th of December last year. I'll take it page by page or you will use the page from the papers. So page 11, page 12, page 13, page 14, page 15. And that concludes the minutes. No comments? Right, we will sign those minutes. Item five is public questions and petitions. As I've previously mentioned, we have one set of questions from one of the members of the public and that's Ruth Hubbard. Would you like to come forward and answer your questions, Ruth? Thank you. Good to see you.
Thanks. Good afternoon. It would be helpful if people weren't forgotten in the anteroom. Several of us waiting. My questions today are about item eight on the City Centre Public Spaces Protection Order. From reading the report, it is not at all clear to me why the existing and effective use of current enforcement measures are insufficient to tackle instances of antisocial behaviour in the city centre and why the committee would seek to ramp this up into the more generalised regulation of public space and behaviour. We all need to feel safe on our streets, but why, for example, is a group of students sitting in a green space having a can of beer at the end of an exam a problem? Or indeed, a student and their visiting parents perhaps on graduation day having a picnic and sharing a bottle of wine? How are buskers and street entertainers affected by these proposals? And where is the evidence that passive begging affects the quality of life of the more fortunate majority? Do we want to stop a child who has lost their bus fare from asking passersby if they can help? So are we really suggesting that members of the public should become less tolerant and begin to refuse to accept these kinds of behaviours and lowering the thresholds for intervention? And to want to cleanse or airbrush our streets and public spaces of people who struggle to or won't conform in a cost of living, mental health, housing and inequality crisis and so on? Secondly, do we also want to make unelected council officers, local lawmakers and enforcers whilst restricting civil liberties, having few checks and balances and with much lower burdens of proof than is normally required? Is then really not a much more positive vision and strategy that could be developed in relation to our public in our city centre spaces? Or at least include it for what our city centre pub streets and spaces mean than extra regulation and criminalisation? Is all that's being proposed really worth it under proportionate response? Thirdly, a narrative of public order and of undesirables is embedded in our British social history, not least as we've seen applied by the current government. I also see another theme of private interests and I see early consultation and scoping work has already been carried out and this seems to have prioritised business and corporate interests in determining things, their interests and their perceptions, in determining how things should be. And we see councils increasingly aligning with these interests everywhere. So what equivalent early consultation and scoping work has been carried out with actually those most likely to be disproportionately affected by a PSPO or with those working with them such as VCS, faith and other outreach groups, hostel and supported accommodation providers, homelessness outreach groups, homelessness asylum seekers, migrant and youth organisations and so on? Or indeed with city centre residents? Or is it, as it appears in this report, that it's what local business interests state and perceive that really matters and that will continue to be prioritised? Fourthly, presumably when it comes to enforcement, there is a potential council resource likely to be involved in if council offices are going to have enforcement powers. Might the council employ a private security firm perhaps to enforce PSPO as some councils have and which offer financial incentives for issuing fixed penalty notices? Will likely costs be consulted on and in relation to views about whether extremely constrained council budgets should be prioritised for enforcement activity of a PSPO and other costs? Do we know at this stage what financial implications there might be here for council budgets or have these been anticipated? Fifthly, I note the local data provided. Members of the public expect proper debate and are reliant on council officers providing some of the information here unless, of course, it is already decided behind closed doors. Why is there nothing by way of evidence provided in the report of the fairly extensive criticisms of and problems with PSPOs? Nor reporting of the extremely thin, too negligible evidence base for any success that can be attributed to them? And we have some national experts at our universities who are incredibly easy to contact on this very issue. Sixthly, the proposed area for the PSPO appears to be widely drawn. It includes perhaps up to 25% of its area where there is the lowest level, nearly nothing, in terms of antisocial behaviour reports and fairly large local areas where there's barely much more. Is the proposed wide area necessary and proportionate as is required? It doesn't really appear to be. Seventhly, the serious studies that exist all draw the same conclusions, of course, including that they disproportionately target, impact and criminalise the most vulnerable, the poorest, young people, migrant groups, homeless people and so on. I note the talk of signposting to support services and an emphasis on harm reduction. But are poverty levels, inequalities, mental health etc. so unperused and benefit levels, youth services, the housing situation and statutory and VCS sector funding also so improved that we actually expect to see a different pattern and picture emerging in Sheffield? How will monitoring be undertaken and responded to? Finally, if the report is agreed, and to be clear, I suggest it needs very much more debate than currently appears to be on the table. So I'm saying, I'm suggesting you don't pass it or don't agree it. But if the report is agreed, will the council ensure that all consultation responses appropriately anonymised are made public? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ruth, for your questions. Very detailed. Clearly a lot of work's gone into that. As I've advised, I won't provide a verbal answer today primarily because it's going to take quite a while to give you decent answers to your questions, but also more importantly because actually a lot of your questions are probably more relevant if a decision comes before us to actually make a PSPO. Today we're talking about whether, well, we're talking about the decision being about whether we go to consultation. And I would recommend that you get involved in that consultation as and when. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, I'd just like to add something, but I'm just asking your permission obviously as Chair, if that's all right.
I'm conscious, Chair, that the item's coming up substantively and you've outlined a procedural point which has to do with the timeliness of the questions vis a vis the decision. But perhaps if there's a point to make about the PSPO today, that could be something that naturally comes up when the item arises?
Okay, fine, thank you.
Okay, in that case we'll move to item six, which is members' questions, of which ironically there are none. Okay, item seven, work programme. I'll hand over to Rachel to do this.
Sorry about that. Thank you, Chair. If I could draw members' attention to the work programme, which starts on page 17 of the main agenda pack. At the top of page 18, there is a set of recommendations that we will be asking you to agree. If anybody in the committee wishes to discuss things that they want to bring forwards for future items, they can do so today. That's absolutely fine. I do believe Chair wants to discuss something regarding task and finish. So we will have some officer availability there, I think, to go through that. And yeah, anybody that wants to discuss anything, that's absolutely fine. And I will pass back to Chair to get those recommendations agreed or for discussion to take place. Do believe councillor Elliott wishes to speak, Chair, so I'll pass back to you now. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. This might be the point that you were going to raise. In our March meeting, we need to add on to the agenda that we'll be reporting back on the task and finish group because we had our final meeting last week. But obviously there wasn't enough time to prepare the report for this meeting, but we will have a full report prepared with our recommendations at the March meeting.
Thank you very much. That's exactly what I was going to ask. I was very keen to get to some form of resolution within this council year. And I believe the March meeting is our last meeting. Thank you. On that basis then, are we happy with the work programme as it stands? Was that a yes guy? Okay, that's been proved unanimously. Thank you. We now move on to the main items. We will, just before we start, item eight. I just want to say that item 11 will be deferred due to the fact that it was the, that's the tram lines discussion, because it wasn't actually discussed at the charities subcommittee. It was deferred there. So we have nothing more to add at this stage. Item eight is the City Centre Public Spaces Protection Order conversation. What I would say, and please bear in mind, that today is about deciding whether we go to consultation. It is not whether we decide to have a PSPO, Public Spaces Protection Order. So it's very difficult because we've run this a couple of times. It's very easy to drift into items about whether we have one or not. So try your best to just keep focus on the consultation. I'll ask the officer Jason to come forward. Please introduce yourself.
Thank you, Chair. I've got other officers supporting as well from various departments and quite obviously from South Yorkshire Police, that makes to me. Would you like those officers to introduce themselves now as well, Chair?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Okay. I'll introduce myself first. And I'm Jason Sedall. I'm the Head of Communities and I've got responsibility for the Safer Neighbourhood Service in Sheffield City Council.
Hi, I'm Ben Kemp. I'm a Superintendent for South Yorkshire Police and I'm responsible for neighbourhoods and partnerships across Sheffield.
Good afternoon. I'm James D, Service Manager in the Antisocial Behaviour Team for Sheffield City Council.
I'm Ben Breswood, Head of Streets, Services, the City Centre Management and the Ambassador is coming under me.
Simon Mitchell, the Community Safety Manager.
Thank you. Over to you, Jason.
Thank you, Chair. Okay, so everybody's had the report prior to the meeting, but I will just quickly go through and summarise some of the key points in the report just for the purpose of the conversation. And as a reminder, I'm not clearly going to read the entire report out because it's a lengthy report and there's a lot of information in there. So just in terms of the purpose of the report, it's to set out the current position regarding antisocial behaviour in the city centre. And we'll come on to the recommendation. I'll pick that up at the end. But essentially, the report sets that position out. There are background papers in there. There's a draft PSPO, or Public Spaces Protection Order, draft for consultation at Appendix A. Appendix B, there's information about the Local Government Association Public Spaces Protection Order Guidance for councils. If members have had a chance to look at that, again, there's a lot of detail. I completely appreciate that. Hence why I've got a range of officers here who potentially might answer any one of your questions today. And Appendix C, there's also the Antisocial Behaviour Crime and Police Act 2014, which is a statutory guidance for frontline professionals. And all of that's included in the information in the report. At 1.1, we've got the introduction of the report, which essentially says that everybody who wants a safe and inviting city centre and Sheffield, like all major towns and cities, is working to ensure that its city centre is the very best that it can be so that local residents and visitors have a positive experience when they visit. It goes on to talk about the exciting and ambitious plans for the city centre in there and the fact that Sheffield is one of the safest cities in the UK. And we have seen quite a lot of success using the existing powers to deal with some of the antisocial behaviour that we've got or impacts negatively on visitors and businesses and members of the public. So there's some recognition that a lot of the work that we've done has been successful in this space. I just wanted to reiterate that point. At section 1.2 of the report, there is a description of what is a PSPO. I'll just briefly read that just for the purpose of the meeting. So Public Spaces Protection Order provides additional powers for enforcement agencies to deal with a particular nuisance or problem in a specific area that is detrimental to the local community's quality of life by imposing conditions on the use of that area which apply to everyone. They are intended to help ensure that people can use and enjoy public spaces safe from antisocial behaviour. And I guess the key point there, regardless of the obvious, is that Public Spaces Protection Orders aren't there to tackle or target certain groups of individuals. They apply to everyone and in this case they'll apply to everyone within the proposed boundary in the report. Section 1.3 goes on to talk about evidence of antisocial behaviour in the city centre. I'm not going to read that section out to you, but that evidence is there and it's based on police data and other data that we've gathered around the impacts of antisocial behaviour in the city centre. And then section 1.4 talks at length actually around the engagement, education and enforcement principles. And essentially talks about in 2023, a best practice guide was launched for groups, charities and individuals supporting people who are vulnerable, begging or homeless on the streets in Sheffield. And a graduated harm reduction approach is taken to enforcement action which focuses initially on helping people to change behaviours and access support to services. And that approach is set out in the City Centre Action Plan. And the plan encompasses of the three themes of engagement, education and enforcement. I just thought it'd be important to point that out, that in terms of the approach that we're taking to this conversation, if you like, is very much not about enforcement first and everything else after. It's about education and enforcement, sorry, engagement and education very much in the forefront of our minds when we're having this conversation. I talked already at 1.5 of the report, there is a draft Public Spaces Protection Order for consideration. I'll come on to the recommendation, as I said, at the end. At 1.6 and 1.7, there's the proposed map or the boundary of the Public Spaces Protection Order. So again, I'm not going to go into the detail there. You'll be able to see that for yourselves in terms of what the proposed boundary is. And then we talk at section 5.1 about what are the alternatives options that we've considered when we've been doing the work to support this report. There is a do nothing option, which is we don't do anything after today, I guess. And the current approach is to target the most entrenched individuals initially and engage in support and if successful to seek legal orders. This approach is limited to those identified and recognised as complex or entrenched and does not allow for immediate intervention or enforcement actions on unknown persons. And the current approach does not allow for wider prevention. A Public Spaces Protection Order would support the identification of individuals requiring essential support or safeguarding and additionally for those individuals against whom legal action is being sought, for example, a CBO or injunctions. The mapped PSP zone could form part of the exclusions or restrictions of those orders. The evidence provided in section 1.3 demonstrates that the ASP issues identified are persistent and have a detrimental effect on the quality of life of those in the locality. An alternative approach is needed to effect a reduction in the level of antisocial behaviour and therefore the do nothing option has been discounted at the stage that we wrote the report. I have to just reiterate, of course, that that could be now if the decision is not to continue with this and not to consult. And so just the final part of this is the reason for the recommendations. And then I'll hand it over to questions. I appreciate I'm talking quite a lot, but there's quite a lot of detail here. The evidence demonstrates a need to change the existing approach to controlling antisocial behaviour in the city centre and the introduction of a Public Spaces Protection Order would give the council and South Yorkshire Police officers additional powers to adopt a new approach. Okay. Just to be really clear and just to reiterate what councillor Williams said, the Chair said earlier, is that the report today is very much focused on the committee making a decision on whether we should consult the public on the information in the report and on the introduction of a Public Spaces Protection Order. And today's meeting is not about the implementation of a Public Spaces Protection Order. It's purely about the decision to consult the public. And when I say the public, the whole range of stakeholders that clearly and quite importantly, as raised earlier, need to have a voice in this conversation. There is a change to the recommendation. It's a change just in the wording. I think it's over on the screen for those of you that, it's behind you. Oh, you can see both. Sorry, I didn't realise. It's on the screen, so apologies. So I'll read it out. But the recommendation, which has changed slightly to the one in the original report, it is recommended that Communities Parks and Leisure Policy Committee, one, approves the proposed draft Public Spaces Protection Order, PSPO, for the purposes of carrying out public and stakeholder consultation on the introduction of a PSPO in Sheffield city centre. And two, approves carrying out public and stakeholder consultation on the introduction of a PSPO in Sheffield city centre. So that's the revised recommendation that members have been asked to consider today. Thank you, Chair. I'll open it up to questions.
Thank you, Jason. I've got a number of people who've indicated they want to speak. I'll start with councillor McGowan.
Didn't expect to be first then, so thank you. Yeah, it is on consultation and I just want to make sure that we are taking a proactive approach, making sure people know about this consultation and take part in it. So I'm thinking about the two big universities that got raised earlier. I'd really like to hear from our city ambassadors as well because they're key to this. They've already been working in this field, so they've got a lot of experience. And I'd like to, you know, even if it's a little section from them about what they've found. I know we can get the data from the police. And yeah, and the local residents as well. I just want to make sure that we're not just putting it out there and then leaving it for them to try and find out about it. We really need to be proactive on it to hear their views. Thanks.
Thank you, councillor McGowan. Yeah, absolutely right. We completely agree. And we, you will understand that we don't know the decision today or the outcome of the meeting today, but clearly officers have had to prepare for both scenarios, I guess. And we've had long conversations about the consultation process and completely agree with you. It needs to be wide ranging. We need to make sure that everyone, all stakeholders have a voice, including the ones that you have suggested there. The approach will be, we will, should the decision be made to go out to consultation, we will look to launch that consultation on the 9th of February. And that will be through the council's Have Your Say platform. What we will do is push that out, obviously, to networks and it's there to share. So, you know, it can be shared electronically. There'll be a link to that and we can share it with a whole range of stakeholders, organisations, individuals. So it'll be there on the council's website and we'll proactively push that out. I don't know if you've got colleagues from Commons here today, but we've also got a media plan in terms of those conversations. So who might some of those key stakeholders need to be? It may be that we need to do additional consultation on the ground as well. We know that, for example, and we don't want to just focus on this, but I know it is an issue that has been raised and will be raised, that we've got potentially a vulnerable cohort of people and we want to see their views and the people that support that cohort's views as well, quite obviously. Again, you know, we haven't made a decision. What we are doing at the moment is just making sure that everyone has a voice through the democratic process. And so I take on board what you're saying and we'll make sure that those, the groups that you've suggested are consulted.
Thank you. Next is councillor Downing.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Jason, for that. And I know we've looked at this front. And I know we're here to decide today whether to go to consultation or not. And I'm really glad you've raised the issue about the vulnerable cohort that we have in the city. Obviously, there are lots and lots of different people in the city centre and we just want to be sure that when we're tackling antisocial behaviour, we're not picking on people that are vulnerable, people that, and as Ruth mentioned, people at university when they want to enjoy themselves in the city centre after a graduation, you know. want to enjoy themselves in the city centre after a graduation, you know, we just want to make sure that what we're doing is the right thing. We all want to see a safe city and I'm sure everybody in this room wants to see a safe city, but we just need to make sure that we're not picking on vulnerable people and making sure that we look after them as well, because they are all part of our city. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
So yeah, councillor Downing, thank you very much for that question and we collectively completely agree and a big part of the, in getting it to this point has been understanding what the data shows and looking at identifying conditions in the draft that will help to address some of those things. And what I'm really clear about is this is not about targeting any one demographic of individual, either in enforcement or in the way it's been designed to date, and obviously this is all subject to change post-consultation, should it be approved today. Other applications, you know, we talked about the night time economy and some of the challenges in the night time economy and some of the use of the draft conditions within here, obviously subject to consultation. In that context, there's the, you know, things, other things that are happening in the city and you'll see the data here, you know, breaks out that quite clearly. So to reassure you, it's certainly not designed to target one demographic or one specific group of people.
It's not like the evidence shows. Sorry, can you just, I know it's very passionate, but please can we keep to the protocols? Please, please.
There are lots of alternative proposals that could have been put on this table and you're just going down a road for a PSPO.
Please, we are, we are.
You don't have the information, you have no proper information.
Well, if that comes out in consultation, then we will address it.
Why go to consultation if you're not going to do it, you need better information than you.
Can I ask you, please?
You can chuck me out into this.
I prefer not to, I prefer not to. Anyway, still have some questions.
You don't have enough information, you've got no proper evidence of what a PSPO is. It's targeting a whole swathe of the city.
Do you really want me to chuck you out, Ruth? Thank you. Following questions, councillor Elliot.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Ruth, for asking the questions and coming today. And I think unlike everyone else who's expressed an opinion here, I think they are important and relevant to this discussion because we need to have this discussion to make an informed decision about whether to go to consultation. So thank you for asking them, I'm sorry you didn't get them, as we have got the officers here today, you know, I've got some questions on similar themes, so I hope you'll, you know, you'll listen to the debate and not get thrown out. So I've got questions on the wording of the draft order, so that is very pertinent to the question of whether we proceed to consultation, just so that I understand what the wording is actually saying. So if we look at restriction two, begging, no person within the restricted area shall make verbal, non-verbal or written requests for money donations or goods, including the placing of hats, clothing, signage, containers, in a manner that causes or is likely to cause harassment, et cetera. So that's any begging, even if someone just sitting quietly on the floor with a hat in front of them. Is that right?
So each of the individual restrictions has been drafted in a way to address the issues that the data has identified. In terms of that specific consultation there, what you've said is not right, so what it clearly says there is likely to cause harassment, alarm, distress, nuisance or annoyance.
So where's the evidence to show that that's likely to annoy people?
So in the section 1.3 within the data, the initial survey with the business community has highlighted that, and what I would say councillor Elliot and has been articulated a number of times is, this is the purpose of the consultation, so if what comes back from any consultation, if approved, is that actually there isn't a strong evidence base or a feeling of that, then that would be included in any post-consultation analysis for obviously the committee to consider at that point whether it wished to proceed any further. So from the information we've got at this time, that's where that's come from.
That's granted, but I think it's important for councillors to understand the nuance of the language. So the loitering, you know, I won't read it out, we've all got it in front of us, but no person shall loiter in any temporary structure, can you explain what that means?
Just per the dictionary definition of a temporary structure.
And why are banks and supermarkets protected, why are independent shops not included in that? It seems like this is an exhaustive list.
Right.
But why is it just picking on, why is it just choosing those establishments?
I think it goes back again, councillor Elliot, to what Ben said there, is that when we've done the initial evidence gathering or the evidence gathering stage, this is the information that we've received. But your questions are ones that could be asked as part of the consultation and for us to answer, and actually could mean that we change the wording there, don't have that in there, there's a range of different options in terms of the outcome. The reason we're here today is to seek a decision to consult with the public and stakeholders on the draft proposal, this isn't the actual final proposal. So accepting that, you know, you're asking about that wording now, that kind of conversation and question will be built into the analysis that we do when we complete the consultation. And it could, it could mean that that drives a different outcome altogether.
Okay, I mean, it is, you know, quite confusing because, I mean, I don't know what the difference is between loitering and assembling, for example. But yeah, I'll move on, I have got more questions, I hope it's okay, because this is, you know, such an important decision that we're being asked to make here, whether to proceed to consultation. So obviously displacement is a fairly obvious question to ask about this, isn't it? So, you know, is, are these, you know, would a PSPO lead to loitering in more residential areas, for example? So you've got, you know, the boundary of the PSPO Netherthorpe in Walkley Ward, Park Hill, Kellam Island, Highfield, St Mary's Church, the Hanover and Lansdowne areas, you know, what work's been doing with, you know, what work's been done to suggest that that's not going to happen?
So I think displacement's certainly a possibility as a result of a Public Spaces Protection Order, and I think we'd be naive to think anything other than that. What I would say is that the city centre provides a natural environment for people to congregate from a variety of areas. If that no longer becomes the location of congregation, then it's highly unlikely that that will revert to one other area, it's likely to be diluted across a range of different ward areas. So we have seen displacement from some of the other towns nearby and cities nearby that do have a Public Spaces Protection Order in, and people travel for a variety of reasons into Sheffield because currently it doesn't have the same restrictions as other areas.
I mean, I think one of the first paragraphs in this report is that Sheffield's one of the safest cities in the UK, so it's not entirely consistent with that. So, I mean, can I ask about alcohol? Because, I mean, I think Ruth raised an interesting point and I think, you know, for me, I was just wondering like if, for example, you've got, you know, some people wanting to sit outside in the peace gardens, you know, they've got young children that want to play outside, you know, they don't want to go to a pub or whatever, they're having a picnic, an iced glass of wine, you know, that's, that's going to be completely prohibited then, that will apply to them as well?
Yeah, so the application, if a PSPO is implemented, that would be, that would be correct factually. What I would say is that the report highlights that any enforcement will be subject of, you know, an education piece, so it's not just going to be an immediate route to enforcement, it's going to be educate, explain, engage with those individuals, but factually, yes, that would be correct. They'd be treated exactly the same way as if it was a group of people intent on disorder walking down the street with open cans of alcohol or groups of people in the night time economy, you know, potentially praying on vulnerable females, it'd be the same application.
Okay. And so the LGA guidance gives examples of other councils addressing the root causes rather than penalising the people, but I can't see anything in the report that shows that work's been done to look at the root causes that lead to those identified behaviours.
Sorry, in respect of which identified behaviours, apologies, just so I'm clear, councillor Elliot, sorry.
Pardon?
In respect of which of the identified behaviours, sorry, is that question relating to?
The identified behaviours that we're seeking to prohibit, so drinking in public, loitering.
Yeah, okay, so I'm sure you're aware that Sheffield has a Changing Futures partnership, which I sit on the board for, which has received significant funding from the government, which is looking at working with cohorts of vulnerable individuals with intense intervention, housing support, counselling, mental health support and, you know, bespoke support to address each one of their individual needs. We have the Harm Toth Pathway, which is a partnership approach that's looking at working together with police and other stakeholders from both voluntary community sector, Sheffield City Council and the police coming together to help people who have issues that need support, who might find themselves vulnerable in the street economy. We do a lot of work with both of the football clubs in Sheffield around people who might come into the city and seek to engage in disorder pre-event or come into the city to drink. We have quite a comprehensive violent reduction strategy that operates in the night time economy that sees us do proactive operations with partners around risky behaviour, for example, males that loiter, seeking to identify vulnerable females in the night time economy, or people who are undertaking aggressive begging, which makes people feel, you know, unsafe or intimidated when using cash machines or any of our shops. We also work in partnership with the Business Improvement District and we have a Retail Crime Forum that looks at addressing some of the issues that are reported by shopkeepers in relation to extensive antisocial behaviour that's having a detrimental impact on their business. And so we do have quite a range of pathways and interventions across the city that we actively refer people into at various points when we come into contact with them, all of our officers and staff across all partner agencies are incredibly committed to trying to change and address some of the underlying issues. And I emphasise, as does the report, that a Public Spaces Protection Order is a tool in the toolbox that can be used to help address some of these issues and make Sheffield a safe and successful place.
I think it is a tool, but it is a very blunt tool that doesn't actually address the root causes. I mean, it's good to hear you talk about pathways.
Marianne, excuse me for a second, I think we're drifting into a discussion about whether we have a PSPO or not. I'd like to bring us back whether we want to go to consultation or not. So can we please try and keep our questions on that basis, rather than having the discussion about whether we're going to bring a PSPO in or not? Thank you.
Okay, shall I let someone else ask questions?
Councillor Weatherall, you're the next.
Thanks, Chair. Jason, it's a big report, but I thank you all for sitting down, you know, for months maybe to get this together, you know, it's a big piece of work and it's always been mentioned about the wardens and everything. And we've listened to Ruth earlier on and Tony Downing, he made a good point. But at the end of the day, you've got to go and if you don't go down this way, getting a consultation ready, you know, finally dandy. But it worried me a little bit when you said we're just going to put it out on social media, we're going to this, going to do the other, we've got lots of organisations in the city centre and you must have got, someone must have got a big list, you know, and I know you're going to come back, but I'd like to see a list of organisations that you guys and girls have put together. Just one other point, Chair, if you don't mind, begging is, people do it for a reason, you know, and we all know that. We've heard the scary stories where beggar gets up after four or five hours, walks around the corner, gets in a, you know, 15 year old, 17 year old car or whatever, you know, I mean, it drives off, you know, and on his drive, he might have got a 20 plate car, you know, but so it's not those we want to be targeting. And I remember a few years ago, if you can remember, that we put in tubs in shops, collection points, and I know we had them on in town hall in first, first area, where people can donate and put money in, because every time I see people vending down and giving somebody money, I always challenge them, my wife goes mad with me, and I always say, please, ask them to throw in a cup of tea or a sandwich or something, you know, just don't give them money, because she don't know what they're going to use that money for, you know, so and the big issue is another one, you know, you always buy a big issue, but some people always say, oh, I bought one, you know, already this week, you know, and they're still giving that money. And that, we've got to get education over there, so maybe this document as well, if it does go through, that is, maybe that ought to be written in there somewhere where we get that message across further to people saying, donate to, can't remember where, it was some charity, I'll come back to that. Thanks, Chair.
Yeah, thanks for the, thanks for the question, well, it was a question in a statement, but I'll have a crack at it. Just insofar as the kind of charities in the third sector, we have a weekly meeting of those sorts of agencies and organisations, which we will, we will hop on the back of that meeting to do that consultation and there's other ways of doing it as well, there's also on-street consultation that we'll do with people who are on the street as well. And just, that's, Help Us Help, Gary, you were referring, sorry, councillor Weatherall you're referring to, which is something that we wrote from Sheffield, it's written by the Community Safety Partnership really, and it's just to encourage people to give money to charities that support homelessness and addiction, rather than straight into their pockets and so on.
Sorry, I've left my mic on, Chair, can I just come back? Is that still going?
Yes.
Thank you, and I've got to councillor Little.
Yes, thank you for your reports and thank you, Ruth, as well for giving a very eloquent description of concerns. Yes, Sheffield University are one, you know, a fantastic place and I'm often putting on Radio 4, who have some good magazine programmes, and very often there are experts from that university talking about deep social issues and criminality in our society. So I am somewhat surprised, or is there a reason why they've not been brought in at this point to inform this process? That's my first question.
Sorry, councillor Little, I thought you were going to carry on. I could bring Jim in as well and we might be able to supplement the answer to this. We are aware that Sheffield Alum University have done a report around Public Spaces Protection Orders and that's something that we have.
Excuse me, Jason, could you turn your mic off, please?
Sorry, that's something that we had and we've read and looked at and considered. Again, just pulling us back to, we want to go out to consultation, we will reach out to the individuals who wrote that report, we will have that conversation with them as part of the consultation piece, we will, clearly they've got important information that they've gathered previously around Public Spaces Protection Orders that we want to take into account and we'll welcome, you know, any input from them. Jim, I don't know whether you want to add to that at all?
Thank you, there's not much to add to that other than to say, one of the reports you're referring to is something that we've referred to throughout this process, so we've not spoken to them directly, but as Jason says, we'd welcome any discussion with them as part of the consultation phase, but in the research that they provided, there is a number of principles around Public Spaces Protection Orders that they set out, we very much viewed, read, considered and included those approaches as part of our approach that we've put in front of you today.
Thank you. I mean, as a sort of, as councillors, we're sort of laypeople, we're not experts, and I would very much welcome in the next meeting that we have to discuss whether or not we should go. to discuss, discuss whether or not we should go ahead, that, that somebody from the university or researcher came from the university to, to give a presentation, to show what the concerns are in Peterborough, where, you know, in Cardiff, Liverpool, so we have a good, uh, um, yeah, a broad outline of what these issues are and common issues are across the country. So I'd like, I'd like that to be considered, please, in, in a following up meeting, follow-up meeting. My second question, uh, where are the councillors in this process? Three, there are three, well, actually four councillors that, six councillors that cover the, the area being considered. Um, I'm one of them and I've not been consulted. Um, three of our, my fellow councillors are in, cover the city centre, to my knowledge they've not been consulted, uh, and neither have, and neither have I, as well, councillor for Walkley, covering Netherthorpe and Dapethorpe, an area that would cover, would see any impact, have an impact, uh, and neither have Tom, I understand either there's Tom, Tom Hunt and councillor Laura, yeah, and then, and another councillor in, in Walkley, who, who could have been, who could have been asked questions. So that's, where are they? Have, have they, have they been, why, what was, why were they missed out?
Thanks councillor Little. Um, yeah, the, okay, so, um, going back in terms of the briefings that we've done for members on public spaces protection orders, we have been to Labour Group and we've also been to speak to Lib Devs about that. I apologise if, if those councillors weren't there as part of that process, but we have been and briefed and answered questions in the past before Christmas of our, on, on this particular issue. So I apologise if they, they don't feel that they've been consulted or councillor, you, you don't either. Um, Jim, I'm just handing over because I know you did some work with the city centre councillors or a session with those quite recently.
Uh, yes, that was specifically the city centre, uh, council wards, we, we sort of met them, uh, forget the day, it was a few weeks ago, um, to talk about the order and the intent and the work that's being done, excuse me, the work that's being done, um, in terms of other councillors as Jase, uh, in some of the other areas involved, as Jason says, we've been through to the, the various political groups, um, but this is about a consultation phase that we're asking, um, a decision on, so obviously the consultation continues.
Chair, I, I s- I find it extraordinary that the th- three councillors that represent the vast majority of this area were not consulted, they are in contact with the police, with the, uh, local, local groups who are concerned about supporting people with disabilities, with alcohol issues, people who've come, who have recently been discharged from prison, and the problems that the, the local community have. I'm just very, I'm absolutely gobsmacked really that those three councillors, whose real, whose job it is to keep in, to stay in, keep in contact with the local councillors, with what's going on, have not, were not consulted. So, you know, I do hope that this next phase, they are going to be consulted, because ha- having been a councillor in, in the, the area that covers these, I know full well that there are lots of organisations, lots of tenants and residents associations, for example, who have a great deal to say, who are sympathetic to the people that live in on the streets around them, but weren't consulted.
Thank you councillor Little, yeah. Um, I, I don't re, not to repeat what I said before, because what I said before is what I said before, but certainly, um, the decision, if that's made today, will be to concert, to, to do, to carry out further consultation, and of course, members, councillors, local councillors will be part of that and have an opportunity to feed into that consultation. It goes back to what we were saying earlier about making sure that all voices are heard and that there's a democratic process that we follow here so that that can happen, and that certainly is our intention.
Last question, Disability Sheffield are an organisation that's client-run, have enormous amount of, of knowledge and experience of people who have got mental health problems, addiction problems, have social problems, uh, a whole range in physical problems. Are they being involved fully in the, this process? Because having my, having been involved with them myself in the past, I've got a really great deal of information and experience that they could feed into this, uh, uh, with answers as well. Will that, can I be assured that that will be, that they will be consulted and engaged in the process?
I think the simple answer to that councillor Little is yes, we will aim to make sure that we reach out to all stakeholders and there'll be an opportunity for all stakeholders to, to comment via the public consultation that we're, that we're planning on putting out through, have your say. Um, but, you know, there is a media plan, there will, this will be, it won't just go on social media, you know, we will make sure that our communications team at Sheffield City Council push out the consultation so that it's visible and that it can be seen and that everybody gets an opportunity.
I, I hope they do as, you do as well, thank you. And the, the, my last point is that I was a councillor for the city centre between 2006 and 2010. The police who I worked closely with do a fantastic job of being there to consult with councillors and local people, um, were again and again very, very frustrated by, by us politicians, because the processes of going out on the streets, nabbing the miscreants, put them into the, the, the system of, of being charged, go to prison and they come back, back out again, and the process goes on and on and on, it revolves all the time and it's very frustrating and no doubt as police it takes up an enormous amount of your resource that could be used elsewhere. What has changed?
Yeah, so, um, a significant amount has changed since 2006 in all stream of areas, uh, and I don't think it'd be appropriate for me to comment on the, um, the rehabilitative nature of the prison or criminal justice system within the UK. Um, what I would say is that, um, as part of the consultation, um, we've, sorry, sorry, not as part of the consultation, as part of the, uh, the drafting of getting to this point today, um, I've been involved along with, um, a number of other officers in, um, in reaching this point, in providing the data, um, in discussing in detail some of the reality of the, um, the draft conditions that are within here and, um, obviously they're all subject to change if consultation goes ahead and, and, and as part of that. So I don't, I don't know if that roundabout answers your question.
No, it doesn't, I, I, I just understand that the issue's got worse because at that time, you know, the country had more money, government, central government were giving local, uh, organisations more money, now we've got less. So I imagine that the pressure's on you to be involved in, in issues around people who were, who are now homeless has actually increased.
Yeah, so, um.
Excuse me, I, I fear we're drifting again into justifying or making a decision about whether we're going to a PSPO or not. We are, just to remind people, we are here to discuss whether we are and make a decision about whether we are going to go to consultation.
If we go into a consultation, I wonder why is it going, is it needed now when it was, you know, what is different? Why, you know, you try, we've got to make the decision at the end of this meeting as to whether we should go to, through with the consultation spa, uh, process. And I want to know what is different than it was back then, nearly ten years ago.
Okay, so that's a, a difficult question to answer in the context of ten years, uh, of difference. And what I can say, um, is that there is a clear evidence base, uh, within the document, uh, in my opinion, um, and, and that evidence is there as to why in the city centre. Um, you highlight there the impact of austerity, of, uh, the economic crisis that the country has found itself in at various points over the past ten years, the impact that's had on funding for partner services, um, and it'd be fair to say that anyone who has any partnership arrangements with the voluntary and community sector will, uh, will hear quite loud and clear that, uh, funding and investment in those spaces has reduced and they are becoming more reliant on, uh, on charitable donations. I think as, uh, local authorities and as public bodies, um, it's a matter of public records that funding has been cut and certainly not kept up with inflation. And so this creates a context where, um, the, these challenges, uh, remain. Um, so I, I couldn't specifically provide you with a binary figure to say where we were in 2006 versus where we are today, and apologies, uh, for that, but I can say as a broad context there, some of the, uh, the impact factors, if you like, surrounding, uh, the context in which we operate today.
Thank you.
Okay, I've got a couple more people have indicated they want to speak, councillor Riddler.
Thank you Chair. Um, just a, hopefully a brief comment from me, I mean, I think it's clear from this, um, very extensive and thorough report that an issue has been identified by obviously more than one agency consisting, uh, um, concerning persistent antisocial behaviour in the city centre, which at times is perceived to be threatening or intimidating, which can adversely affect residents, visitors, businesses, um, all of whom have an expectation, I feel, to, to feel safe and comfortable. And it's clear that a lot of work has got into this to get us to this point, and for that I would commend everybody who has been involved in this. Um, and I think from, just from that, it, it, that it's entirely reasonable, um, that, um, this proposal now to, on how to deal with this is put to public consultation so that then we can further discuss, if necessary, the proposals in due course. We've got a city centre which is demonstrably on the, undergoing transformational work. I think it is important that we hear a wide range of views and voices on this, um, because ultimately, uh, we have a, you know, a, a duty to ensure that everybody does feel safe in the city centre, thank you Chair.
Councillor Rees.
Janet, could you turn your mic off? There you go. Um, sorry councillor Williams, I, I do, like, I, I do feel like I'm going to be staring slightly into the whether we need it or not, that, I know we're trying to, but I do think it's right for us to try and examine the definitions that we are going to send out for consultation, because if we do not get these definitions right, then people will be drawing and consulting and, and making ideas on things that might or might not be in there. Um, I'd like to, because this has been an issue in the past, Police and Crime Act taught of protest becoming illegal when it becomes a nuisance. What is a nuisance protest? No one knows, it's on one person's side, it's a very, very woolly aspect. So number one, alcohol on the streets, um, and I'm not expecting a response to any of these because, yeah, it's a consultation, alcohol on the streets, let's say we're hosting Euro 2028 when this police or, uh, public space protection order is still in force, there is a pub, it's a nice day, they go out and sit outside the Crucible, it's no longer on licensed property, does that come under the PSPO despite the fact that they are sitting just outside the boundary of a pub? Secondly, um, begging. I, I walk down Fargate a number of times, uh, a, a week, um, I sometimes get approached by charities asking me to sign up, is that begging? But I'd, I'd, or, or is that a legal form of begging which doesn't come under this? But a busker who is, is there collecting money but providing entertainment to the street, at what point does begging from a, or, or what could be covered as begging by a charity to sign up for a mailing list as opposed to a, a busker or even, um, uh, what's his name, um, lost it, John Burkill, the man with the pram, he regularly stands on Fargate, does that count as begging? Now, um, loitering, let's say that I am someone who is on benefits and the United Church, the Kingdom of God, down on Church Street is opening their food bank, I've arrived a bit early because the bus that I've taken has got here a little bit early, I sit outside the cathedral waiting for it to open, is that loitering? Now, and, and this is, this is what I find with the problem, the definitions that are given in the PSPO, is the fact that they are on judgement of one person. Where does, where does begging stop and start when it comes to an organised charity asking for money as opposed to someone who has given a lot to the city? Well, like, where are we drawing this consultation? Do we need to hammer out what these things are before we send them out? Because I, I, I'm not confident that we can, we can ask people's opinions on stuff which we ourselves are not confident on.
Okay, thank you councillor. Um, there was quite a lot of questions in there, um, so I will endeavour to, uh, answer them as best I can recollect them, um, so.
Excuse me, can you just turn your mic off?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not, I'm not expecting a response for each and every one of them, it's just, like, this is an incredibly kind of vague prospect, that how can we draw accurate conclusions as to the desire for a city centre to want or need it, based on stuff that we ourselves are not confident on.
So I think that, uh, broadly, the, um, if the consultation is approved and that feedback comes back loud and clear that there's a lack of clarity, then obviously that, that information will come back and that'll be something, um, to consider a, a, a future date. In terms of some of the specific, uh, things you've asked about, busking is managed entirely separately, um, and you get a, a busking licence and a peddler's licence and, and that's a, a regulated activity that takes place in the city, the same with charitable collections, so, um, you have to be there for a registered charity and it's got a structure and a governance around it along with the legal framework, um, and there is an element of this that, uh, is interpretation, uh, and that unfortunately is the nature of legislation, whether that's been made, uh, locally or whether that's been made nationally, and invariably a lot of that is unpicked through, uh, either stated cases or through, uh, interpretations, uh, at, at the point of a court there. What, what I would say is that this is the purpose of consultation and there's been a selection of, of, of concerns, a selection of thoughts and comments that have been raised today, and what I would say is already with the, uh, even the simply, it being raised at this committee meeting today, there is a real clear appetite for various stakeholders to really have a say on this, on both sides of the fence, uh, you know, in, in around this, and, and, and that is the purpose of us being here today is to, um, is to get a decision around whether or not we want to afford those people, uh, an opportunity to have their say, uh, around this and then consider what that means for the documents that are in front of you and moving forward.
Um, secondly on the space, uh, page thirty-five of briefing or section one point three point one, it says that the key locations within the city centre by behaviour type are, uh, West Street, Castle Square, Moorfoot and the Underpass by St Mary's Gate, and also Arundel Gate and Sheffield Exchange for alcohol-related, uh, instances. This, the area drawn by the PSPO is very large and I know the, the stretched resources that both the city ambassadors and the police and the local policing teams have, wouldn't it be more sensible to, um, to just, uh, kind of focus on those key areas so that you can have a more targeted, more kind of well managed and, uh, well resourced approach to this, rather than just casting the net wide?
Ben might want to come in on this as well, but one of the, the, there's a large area that's been considered based on the evidence, but within that area, there are particular pockets where there are more, uh, more incidents than others. And one of the things that, should we go to consultation and that ultimately results in the council making a public spaces protection order further down the line, one of the things that we will have developed as officers is, uh, what we're calling the Enforcement and Support Protocol, which sets out the approach to enforcement and will cover lots of different elements, including, um, the areas that we need to target the resources initially, and those will change over time of course as well. Um, so we keep a close eye on where the incidents are being reported, hopefully we'll be making a difference in certain areas by targeting certain areas, um, but then we'll also keep an eye on what's happening elsewhere and if those things change, we change, we adapt our approach and target resources in different areas. So the, the, the boundary itself is based on evidence and is based on what is largely considered to be the city centre, um, but within that area, there will be particular pockets where there is, where ASB is more prevalent than other areas.
Yeah, Chair, if I can just add to that in terms of thinking about the resources that we're deploying in the city centre already, I think it's, it's sensible to understand that things like the city centre ambassadors, um, community support wardens, the police are already dealing with these types of issues in these types of locations, so we don't necessarily see this boundary as being something that's going to add additional impact on to the resources that are already being deployed in those areas, because those resources are already having to deal with these types of issues. And, and what this will do is this will support them being able to do that more effectively.
Okay, can I, again.
One final question on the, on the construct of consultation.
If it's on the consultation.
It is on the consultation, please, I'm, I'm a stickler for definitions, um, and I think we need to hammer out what the definitions, definitions mean before we go forward, but on the consultation, I do see that the consultation will be as, uh, the. before we go forward. But on the consultation, I do see that the consultation will be as the gunning principles, which I think everyone, everyone agrees is good. But businesses outnumber support services ten, twenty to one in the city centre. How are we going to make sure that the valuable voice of support services are not drowned out and they do have the weighting that they need, especially those like the Salvation Army, the Arch Project, Ben Centre, Victoria Hall? Because I'm sure we can find as many businesses or support services who want it. But they've obviously got a financial incentive to approve it and these support services, we don't want them drowned out.
Thanks, councillor. Well, it's difficult to predict what the response will be to the consultation. So it's a difficult question to answer at this point if we decide to go out to consultation. That, that will be in future for the committee to decide. So if we come back here and we've got the outcome of the consultation, officers will present that in a way that's fair and balanced. Because I think you're right, that's what you say. We're not just going to say, well, you know, eighteen people said, eighteen businesses said that and only one charity said this, so therefore that means, I think that's what you're saying. Clearly, we can't do that, can we? We've got to have a more balanced approach to that and that will form part of the work that officers have to do once the consultation, if we go out to consultation closes. It's difficult to answer because I don't know what the, you know, the, that will look like in terms of the volumes and who doesn't respond. It could be, for example, that when we look at the consultation, if we go, I'll keep clarifying that. If we go out to consultation, it could be that when that consultation closes, we can see that there's a clear and obvious gap in terms of the response and that actually we need to do some more work to reach out to those organisations or individuals, whatever that might be. And that might be something that we have to consider. But it's a difficult one to answer until we know the outcome of the consultation. I take your point. Thank you, please, Ruth. I have been in contact with them, actually. They wrote to me on Friday. Yeah, and I'm sure they will be involved. I have. No, they've done, I'm not, I'm not going to have an argument with you, Ruth. I'm going to take councillor Hooper and I haven't forgotten you, councillor Elliot. I'd like to let the people who haven't spoken speak first.
Thank you, Chair. It's been said before from councillors that this report is a thorough report. It's a long report. Any report of this length, you can pick holes in if you want. I would propose that we approve the two things up there, one and two. It is a proposed draft. It's not set in stone. And hopefully, there will be some meaningful changes, if there are changes required, when we go to consultation. So again, I think we need to agree to proposed draft there on one and two and agree, Chair. Thank you.
Okay, finally, I think councillor Elliot, you wanted to say something.
Sorry about that. Thank you for letting me ask one more question. I know I've taken up a lot already. Can I just pick up on the, the City Ward councillors very, very quickly as it was raised? Because I think, you know, I can probably speak for them to say they're frustrated by the lack of joined up thinking. I mean, have you seen how many twenty four hour boo shops there are in the city centre? So, you know, two examples of better long term thinking are, you know, working on licensing, you know, not letting, you know, businesses basically operate twenty four boo shops so prolifically in the city centre when you've got a problem with people drinking in the city centre. And more public toilets, which might help with one of the other undesirable behaviours. So I was just going to ask about enforcement, because we've not really touched on that, I don't think, too much. And, you know, whilst we can see from the report, there clearly is evidence of ASB. You know, I haven't really seen evidence that the PSPO would be likely to effectively reduce it. And when I've asked about this in the past, have been told that based on the experience of other local authorities, they do work well, the PSPOs, as long as they're resourced effectively. So what resource is going into this? I mean, financially, because we've not seen the budget implications.
Thanks, councillor Elliot. In terms of the budget implications, for this particular report, there are no budget implications because we're making a decision to consult on the budget paid for through office of time. So in direct answer to the question about this particular proposal and recommendation today, there are no budget implications. I think Ben Brailsford attempted to answer a similar question around the boundary and the resources around the boundary. The, we're not proposing to recruit any more people. And in this case, it would be the city centre ambassadors who work for Ben and, and the Sustainable Communities officers or as the traditionally known wardens who work for myself, and there'll be a combination of those council officers. And of course, Ben Kemp's talked about police resource. I may want to just expand on that in terms of police resource in the city centre as part of the answer to the question. But the, the honest answer from a council officer's resource is that we're not planning on employing more people to manage the public spaces protection order, although as Ben says, the officers who are working in the city centre now are dealing with a lot of these issues but don't always have the power to deal with some of those issues. And we've talked about this potentially being an additional tool in the toolkit, if you like, alongside all of the other interventions that we've already said have been successful or we've had success with them. So it's a long answer to your question, but hopefully answered it. And I don't know if Ben wants to just elaborate on police resource.
Yeah, from a South Yorkshire police point of view, we've increased resources in the city centre around twelve months ago by fifty percent. We now have seven days a week coverage, working in early and a later. So I'm very content that we can, if it's through consultation and then if a committee decides at a future date, which is implement, I'm very content that we can resource that within the current structures that we have.
Okay, so there's no additional resources within the council?
Councillor Elliot, you're drifting into.
Oh, sorry.
I don't think this is particularly relevant to consultation.
The, there's fifty percent more police in, in the city centre, is that right?
Over the past twelve months, yes. So not as a direct result of this report.
Okay, no, I mean, that's, that's really, really welcome. And it makes me wonder whether that actually negates the need for a PSPO because perhaps if all the extra police can deal with the actual criminal activity, then we can come back and look at whether PSPO is actually needed. But yeah.
I think that's a point if we go any further, you can make again. Is there anybody else wishes to make any comments or ask any more questions before we go to the vote? Right. In that case, we have a recommendations before us. The two you can see on the screens. The clarity, I shall read them out. One, that this committee approves the proposed draft Public Spaces Protection Order, PSBO, for the purposes of carrying out public and stakeholder consultation on the introduction of a PSBO in Sheffield city centre, as outlined. And then, and two, approves carrying out public and stakeholder consultation on the introduction of a PSBO in the Sheffield city centre. Are we all agreed or? If there are members who wish to dissent, please raise your hands. Okay, in that case, we shall move to a vote. All in favour? All against? Thank you very much. That was, that, the formality, that recommendation was approved. Would you, would you like a five minute break before we go on? Thank you. Right, we'll go to item ten, which is the, sorry, item nine, climate change, climate statements. Could I ask the officers to introduce themselves before they speak? And over to you.
And I'll start, if that's okay. I'm Ruth Bell, I'm head of Parks and Countryside. And I'm bringing this item for Lisa Firth, who unfortunately can't be here today. So I've got colleagues who might be able to help if you have any questions. I'll ask Victoria to introduce herself.
Hi, I'm Victoria Penman, Sustainability Programme Officer in the Sustainability and Climate Change Team.
And we're here to recall, so I'm head of libraries and archive service.
And I'm not going to go through every page of the report because I'm, I'm sure that you've all read it and digested it. But what I'll do is I'll just give a brief summary, just take a couple of paragraphs from it and then open the floor for questions if anybody's got any. And so the, the report is presenting this committee with a climate statement for consideration to ensure that the proposed actions are reflected in the work programme of this committee going forward. The Communities' Parks and Leisure Policy Committee climate statement seeks to firstly respond to the annual climate progress report twenty two, twenty three in a timely manner, restate the cross party council commitment to taking the action that we can to address the climate emergency, adapt our city and council for a changing climate and reduce emissions to achieve our ambition to be a net zero city and council by twenty thirty. And also increase understanding of the, of the impact that climate change will have on committees, the opportunities that tackling climate change offers and the contribution to climate change and net zero action that each committee is currently making and also needs to make going forward as we progress. And then I'll just move on to, this is page one, seven, nine in your, in your papers, if that's okay, just to set out where it is that this has come from. So on the eleventh of December twenty twenty three, the Transport, Regeneration and Climate Policy Committee approved the first annual climate progress report since the council declared a climate emergency in twenty nineteen and it set an ambitious target to be a net zero city by twenty thirty. Lower down on that page, it stated in the Sheffield City Council constitution under the council functions of each committee that when devising policy, evaluating service delivery and taking decisions, the committee must consider, amongst other things, climate and biodiversity. And in relation to climate change, each of the committee's work is impacted and affected by other committee decisions. And we will only succeed if we take cross committee approach to climate action. I'm going to then move on to, it's page one, nine, four, which specifically addresses this committee. And you'll notice in the report that it touches on what all of the other committees are doing, which is relevant to, to taking these decisions. It won't surprise you to hear that, that this committee is responsible for a broad range of services and it will be impacted by climate change, the climate change emergency and also is able to contribute to the response to the climate change emergency in lots of different ways. The, this committee's had a lot of conversations about the impact of climate change and how you see them, notably in my area in, in Parks and Countryside. We know that extreme weather has a, has a massive impact on the work that we do and the response that we have to, have to take. But also colleagues like, like Hillary in responding to the, the cost of living crisis and supporting people in warm spaces, there's an awful lot that's happening in this committee that is contributing to the response to, to climate change. And obviously, there is also a lot more that we can do. On page one, nine, five in the report, there are a number of key actions. This is not an exhaustive list. There is a lot of other work that is happening that contributes to the response to climate change and also the response to the nature emergency, both of which are, as we know, linked. All of them will be familiar to you. You know that at the next committee, we're going to have an update on the green and open space strategy, which is going to be a forward look to how we update our strategy properly, looking at how the world has changed following Covid, following the declaration of a climate emergency, following the declaration, declaration of a nature emergency and how we need to make sure that our strategy is fit for purpose in setting out how we will manage and maintain our green spaces across the city. Ellie Fraser's been to talk to you about bereavement provision, that is burial spaces and how we respond to people's deaths in the city and being able to facilitate the disposal of those, those deceased people in a dignified and caring manner. The biodiversity task and finish group, we touched on it ever so briefly at the start of this meeting and we'll be having a full report come back at the next, next meeting in March, setting out what, what it was that we set out to achieve and what it is that we've achieved through that group. At the end of today's meeting, you've got a little bit of an update, I think, on the sports and leisure strategy from colleague Kate Clark. The fourth item here is that investment in sports and leisure facilities, so those two things are linked. And then also, and this is something that strays into Victoria's territory, but our land and energy storage and generation decarbonisation roadmap. So that's just some of the things that are the focus of this committee in responding to the climate change crisis.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions? You've overwhelmed them.
Would you like me to read out the recommendations, just so that you're really clear what it is that you're approving? Is that all right? So this committee is recommended to, A, consider the statement of climate commitments relevant to this committee; B, resolve that it is satisfied that the actions contained within the statement of climate commitments are reflected in the work programme of the Communities' Parks and Leisure Policy Committee; and then C, consider whether only amendments to the work programme of this committee are required in order to best meet the actions contained within the statement of climate commitments. One thing I would, I would add in is you might want to talk about how frequently you want this to come back for further conversations. Do you want to have a further conversation about this every six months? It says here about putting it in the work programme, the, the items that we've talked about. But do you want to have a specific item on this every few months to make sure that it is coming back and it stays on your agenda, stays at the top of your agenda?
Personally, I think that would be a good idea, but I'll be guided by the other members of this committee. And should we say every six months? Okay, that's noted. On the basis of the recommendations then, are we all agreed? That is unanimous. Thank you very much. Thank you for your time. Okay, item ten is a decision on the grant arrangements for volunteer run libraries.
Thank you. Let's introduce myself again. Hillary Colson, I am the head of the Libraries and Archives and Information Service. I've got the full title on the, on the slide in front of me. So again, I won't go through the fullness of the report, but I will just kind of give you a brief summary and read through the recommendations. So this is two oh nine, page two oh nine of the agenda pack, because I realise there's a lot of papers in your agenda pack today. So the report itself is seeking approval from the committee for the support to our non statutory libraries for two financial years. So this is both the next financial year twenty twenty four, twenty five, and then for the next financial year after that, twenty five, twenty six. So it covers the grant awards to our associate libraries and the support package for both associate and co delivered libraries. And I'll just kind of cover those in a little bit of detail. So on page two oh nine, in paragraph one point, one point one, it sets out the, the budget for the package for our associate libraries is currently at two hundred and nine thousand pounds per year and it's been at this level for a few years now. So this includes direct grant payments to our eleven associate libraries and that totals around a hundred and thirty five thousand pounds per year. So overall, the paper is proposing a standstill position for the next two years and that includes a standstill position for our direct grant payments to those libraries. Just as a bit of an aide memoir, the associate libraries are our eleven libraries that receive a grant support from the council. They are run by our library trustee groups and they are staffed by our volunteers. So the co delivered libraries are five libraries who are run by library trustee groups and staffed by volunteers. But the other running costs, premises, materials, books, et cetera, are funded through the council's library service. So that's a slight difference between the associate libraries and the co delivered. So the paper is, is trying to do two things. One, to agree the overall kind of budget of the two hundred and nine thousand, the direct grant payments for the associate libraries within a wider package of support for both. And I'll just cover those in a little bit of detail, if that's okay. Excuse me. Excuse me. So the reason why we think it's important to maintain it at a standstill level is that we know that some of the biggest challenges for our kind of non-statutory libraries have come quite, come about relatively recently. So in 2014, when they originally were created, the intention was that longer term, they will become financially sustainable on their own. However, we know that the pandemic has had a significant impact on volunteering levels, and also with the cost of living crisis, energy prices going up significantly, their ability to manage those ongoing running costs has been impacted quite significantly, as well as their ability to fundraise to meet those increasing costs. So on page 210, on paragraph 1.2.3, we're just being clear that we're not proposing any changes to the co-delivered library model through this paper. So the library service will continue to meet the ongoing running costs, the trustee groups will continue to staff through, through, through the volunteer that they do at the moment. We do note though that it's been about 10 years since that model started, and actually it's probably useful to, for us to review that model in, in future, just to see how, how that's working currently. In section 1.3 of the paper and 1.4, what we've tried to provide is an overview of what is outside of £135,000 of direct, direct grant payments. So largely that's what we would term operational support. So that money funds a library volunteer network officer who supports the library trustee groups, that could be through training, it could be through day-to-day support with kind of the volunteers. It also provides IT support, van deliveries to deliver reserved books across the city, and relevant licences so that people can log on to the public network, and what we call the people's network within our, within our libraries. It would also include things like training on the library management system, and some of those real basics to make sure that there, we're a connected kind of collection of 27 libraries across the city. We know that, from asking our kind of non-statutory libraries, some of the most significant pressures that they have, which is covered in section three, so that's page 213 of the pack, some of the biggest outcomes that they are struggling with is around book issues and the number of trustees, so that's on the chart on page 214. And then also their top concerns are around the training for their trustees, and also the availabilities of grant funding and utility costs, and that's why we're proposing to maintain it at a standstill level. We're hoping that providing a two-year standstill position gives them some sustainability beyond just a one-year programme, but also allows us to have some conversations with them around what long-term financial sustainability would look like. As such, we are recommending that the committee approves distributing the £137,700 grant fund to the associate libraries for the period of April 24 until March 26, and also approving maintaining the support that's set out through the paper for both the associate and the co-delivered libraries over the same period. Obviously happy to take any questions you might have on that.
Thank you very much. councillor McGowan, first again.
You'll not be surprised to hear me say that I really welcome this and for the stability for the two libraries in my ward that are run by volunteers, I think it's, it's great that we're able to do this. My questions are, have they been consulted? Do they know about this? Is, is there anybody, is there any library that's going to be, it's going to be an issue for because what we've been giving them in the past isn't enough already with rising costs? Which leads me on to the next one about the risk, and you mentioned the energy costs. If for two years they get this, but then suddenly energy goes up, I think you've mentioned 80%, what happens then? Are we going to be faced with libraries that are going to close? Have we got a back, a fallback position? And what work are we doing to help them to become sustainable? Please.
Thank you, councillor. Sorry, I'm just quickly writing those down so I don't forget all the points. So in terms of whether they know about this, we have had kind of informal conversations. So we have, or they hold a volunteer library network meeting monthly, which I try to attend as much as possible. So I think in late last year, we said that we were looking at a kind of a standstill position. Actually, at that point, it was for one year rather than two years. We've had some quite recent conversations with colleagues in finance about the, the wider council's financial position and, and what we can kind of do to try and maintain as much stability as possible. I wasn't able to attend the meeting for the last kind of month or two for personal reasons. So if there is any comms gaps, they're absolutely on my part. But certainly they, they, I think are expecting a standstill position, but, but potentially just for one year rather than, than the two years. In terms of the kind of, the ongoing kind of risks, particularly with kind of costs going up, we run the library survey for all our non-statutory libraries on an annual basis to try and kind of pick those up as a kind of like a, a weather vane. And it won't surprise you to know that kind of grants and utility costs have been at the top of, of those responses for, for at least the last few years, as you would expect. In between that though, so the, the role that I talked about, about the library volunteer network officer, is a very long-winded post-title, but actually what that provides is our kind of day-to-day kind of link between the council, our services, and then all of our non-statutory libraries. Actually, for us, and I think for them, that is a really vital role of ongoing conversations, and also trying to understand the live issues with any kind of library on the ground. So for me, I think we would pick up if there were significant kind of sustainability issues. We know that each library has its own kind of challenges for council libraries as well as for, for kind of our non-statutory libraries, and therefore it's not a one-size kind of meets all. We are working to try and kind of support them with kind of training. And kind of, I know that kind of Daryl, who is our, our volunteer network officer, does an awful lot of, of work kind of directly with them around kind of volunteering and kind of training that they might need. But I think going forward, as we look at the training for our staff, we are also looking to try and make sure that they have the opportunities to cut, to come on, on board with that as well. That is kind of being planned at the moment, so there's nothing kind of specific in terms of dates, but we are trying to be as inclusive as we can be, because I think there is that point where anything we think our staff and libraries need, actually it could be useful kind of like for our, our wider kind of like network. If energy goes up and what happens, I think is, is significant kind of risk, probably both for the council as well as for non-statutory libraries. And I think the response to that, for, for me, would largely depend on whether that was going to be a sustained trend or whether it was going to be a spike. Sometimes it's difficult to know that without a bit of a crystal ball. I think certainly the last time, in the last financial year, when the library service had a significant budget reduction, we genuinely protected the non-statutory libraries kind of from that, recognising that standstill for them actually meant a, a real term reduction. And I think this probably kind of does the same, so I don't underestimate the impact of what standstill does, which is why I think that longer-term conversation about what financial sustainability actually kind of means for them, and about making sure that they have got the skills within their kind of trustee groups to do kind of fundraising and make sure that those are sustainable. I think those are the key issues as well, but, but we would obviously look at them, you know, as things arose.
Yeah, I just want to come back because I know the biggest issue for any group is usually the running costs of the buildings and things, any charity or anything. And that's where the issues come, because even going through the sci-fab, a lot of organisations won't fund bills and things. They'll do projects, but it's, it's those utility costs that a lot of organisations struggle with, and a lot of funders won't give funding for that. And that's the bit that really worries me about the long-term sustainability, and the fact that they're linked to the council, and, you know, some funders probably won't do it because it's like subsidising the council, and, you know, so they might have, have barriers there to funding because of the links with us, where some charities won't. So I've, you know, I'm just, just worried about long-term. We've kept them going, and it's all been absolutely fantastic and great, and I'm so grateful to the, the volunteers and everything, and all the staff that's put effort into this. It just really worries me that, I just don't want to see something coming in the future that we're not planning for really. Thank you.
Yeah, if I could come back on that, I, I think you're absolutely right. And I think part of looking at that kind of fundraising and grant funding is around trying to make our buildings within the council as well as kind of, you know, our, our kind of wider estate more sustainable. So actually, we're looking to reduce energy costs rather than just meet increasing energy costs. There are kind of increasing grants available for that, but you're right, the eligibility for them does depend on, so our associate libraries can apply for grant funding pots that our co-delivered libraries can't, for example, because of how they're funded. So yeah, we do need to be really clear when we look at what long-term sustainability is, that we're not actually almost providing a blocker to, to people being access, able to access grant funding.
Councillor Wetherall.
Thank you, well, thank you for the report, and thank you for bringing it across to us so well. Well, I'm, I'm pleased that you mentioned the, the help and support that you are giving to these libraries for volunteers to go on fundraising events, you know, because that's a beginning to, that, that's beneficial to all of us, you know, if you can get them doing more fundraising, the volunteers, it's, it's, it's great to see. Unfortunately, Shire Green and Brightside, we haven't got a library, but we've got Firth Park, a library which is very well-attended, and then we've got Learning Zone and Echelfield, and all three I go on a regular basis. And it's just going back to what Cannon's been pushing for. If, if, if any of these libraries come to you and just say, we've got a massive bill, you know, we can't, we just can't do it, we don't have any keys back, is there anywhere where you've got a pot of money? I shouldn't say that to you, he's got a pot of money. But is there anywhere, any, any help and support? Or before it got to that state, have you already looked, you know, you know?
Thank you, councillor. Yeah, I think the answer to the pot of money is probably kind of, no to start with. I think that, that kind of, you know, reserve would, would be helpful for all of us, but I think what we do try and do through our annual surveys is try to understand the kind of, the, the financial, sort of, you know, position that, that each of our branches are in. So we look at kind of income reserve levels to try and understand where, you know, that those real kind of pinch points are. I, I think we do need to review where our kind of libraries are at the moment, and what that kind of looks like over the two years kind of standstill. At, at the moment, I am not aware that any library is at the point where they are kind of hitting that point, but I don't doubt that some are kind of close to that, given the costs that are, are running through, particularly with energy.
If you don't mind, chair, just to come back on, on that. So, I mean, reserves, that's what, that's, that's what I wanted to hear, if there's any reserves, and it sounds like there's, there's no real pot of money, no reserves, which I knew of that. So, so going back to what Cannon asks, you know, if, if the bills came in, you know, when they're going up, you know, 60, 70, 80%, then we're in trouble.
I think we would have to look at things on a kind of case-by-case basis. I think if anybody was in that situation, we would obviously work with kind of colleagues across the council and yourselves to kind of make you aware of it, but also to understand what our options were. I think, you know, that, that, that regular kind of ongoing kind of funding is there through the grant for the associate libraries and through the, the library service for the co-delivered libraries. But yes, anything kind of over and above the norm, I think we would have to look at on a case-by-case basis. And for me, you would look at something that's about kind of a short term, but then also kind of longer term, about what is sustainable both for the, the library in question, but also the, the organisation and the, and the city more midly.
Councillor Little.
Thank you for your report. Yes, I, my ward contains Upper Thorne Library and Walkley Library. I know both of them have got windows that sort of leak energy like there's no tomorrow. Is there any overview being taken over on, on the issue about looking at good practice across all the libraries about insulating their properties and particularly, you know, putting new, new windows or secondary glazing? Is there any, is, have you employed an, an architect or an advisor who could help with that, or where would that person come from?
Thank you, councillor Little. So just to take the, the libraries in question, Walkley specifically, I know we have been doing a significant amount of work with our colleagues in facilities management, because there was significant kind of repair issues, and we have been working with them to try and kind of, you know, rectify those. So I know a lot of work has been done on both the roof and the glazing at the front and the rear of, of, of the building. So I, I'm hoping that that has been improved quite significantly over the last kind of six months. I need to check in and see where they're up to, they were just on the verge of replacing them the last time I checked, a few months ago. I also know that the, the sector themselves, so through the voluntary library network meetings, they are also looking at kind of good practice amongst themselves around kind of sustainability and, and energy efficiency. As I said, apologies, I've, I've not been for the last few months of, of those meetings, so I might be just slightly out of the loop with that, but I can certainly see kind of where they are up to. I think there's also the national networks for voluntary libraries, I know that they kind of connect into, and, and look at what options there are, and, and what kind of grant pots are available to them, because as I've said, particularly with the associate libraries, with a lease in place, they will have access to grant funding that, that the council wouldn't do. So they are, they have a, a different kind of landscape, if you like, to look for funding, particularly around kind of renewable energy. So I, I'm, I'm not going to kind of give you a kind of like a fluffy answer, but I will, I will go and, and talk to them and, and see kind of where we are, where we're up to, because I can remember conversations taking place about that, I just can't remember the outcome of them, so apologies for that. But if I can come back to you in more detail, side.
Thank you very much, you'll be very interested. I know that the librarians and the volunteers are complaining about how cold it is, particularly in, in Walkley Library. I also know that Upper Thorne Library have got, is a listed building, and doing any substantial work to its wind, the structure of its, its windows, as it were, will, you know, be very expensive. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there any more questions, or shall we go to the recommendations? No, okay, the recommendations are that the Communities' Parks and Leisure Policy Committee, A, approves the council distributing a grant fund of £135,700 per year to the associate libraries to assist with their continued sustainability for the period 1st of April 2024 until 31st of March 2026, subject to relevant agreements and criteria being satisfied; and B, approve support for associate and co-delivered libraries from the Libraries, Archives and Information Service and other council services continuing until the 31st of March 2026, as set out in this report. Are we in agreement? That is passed unanimously, thank you. Thank you very much. That concludes the decision-making element of this meeting today. We've got, we did have three verbal reports. Item 11 was a verbal update on tram lines. As I said at the beginning, the Communities' Subcommittee didn't actually take that item, so there is nothing to update at this stage. The way it's looking, they will meet before our next meeting, so we will be able to provide an update for that. So we'll go to item 12, which is a verbal update on the Rose Garden Cafe.
Thank you, that, so I'm, I'm going to give that update if that's okay, and I, and I will be brief, I'm, I'm very aware of the, the time. So you last had an update at your, a verbal update at your last committee meeting, which was on the 12th of December. So I'll just do a little bit of a recap of what's happened since the, the decisions were taken, and then let you know what's happened since your last committee meeting. The key thing that I would do is I would point everybody to a report that was taken to the last Charity Trustee Subcommittee, which was last Monday, so Monday the 22nd of January, an update report went to that committee, and with a, with a couple of recommendations that, that were taken and, and went through the system. So I would point you to that report for a really full update on what has happened, actually since the, the issue started with the Rose Garden Cafe, but in particular the things that have happened since the Charity Trustee Subcommittee took decisions on the 18th of October to agree that a partnership would be established to look at how we can restore and refurbish that, that, that building and, and get it operating again. So, quick recap, October the 18th, Charity Trustee Subcommittee had a report setting out a desire to establish a partnership to allow the various interested parties, including Sheffield City Council, to work together to, 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 well, work, work their way through the, the complication that is finding out what's wrong with the building, and how much it's going to cost to restore.
wrong with the building, how much it's going to cost to restore it and getting that work done. I updated you at the meeting in December that a number of meetings have been held, really positive meetings, with the Friends of Graves Park and also the Save the Rose Garden Cafe group. Those positive meetings have continued. There were a couple that had happened before your last committee meeting, so I talked to you about a workshop on the tenth of November, and then a further meeting on the twenty-fourth of November. Since then, since your committee meeting, a further meeting has happened in December, just towards the end of the week that your committee meeting happened. And a number of things have been agreed. There's been a memorandum of understanding established between the, between the groups. The Chair of the Partnership has, role has been advertised, and an ask went out for any people that wanted to sit on that partnership board. The meetings have continued between the three groups whilst the work has been ongoing to establish who will hopefully chair that partnership going forward. And I'm happy to report that at the last Charity Trustee Subcommittee, the Chair of the Friends of Graves Park said herself that she was cautiously optimistic about progress that was being made. The groups are all working very well on what that partnership is going to look like, what the Chair of the partnership needs, and some application, an application was received from, from somebody with regard to that, that Chair role, and also on what it is that those groups can do whilst they wait for the partnership to be established. Because one of the really important things that was flagged by the two groups, the Friends and the Save the Rose Garden Cafe Campaign Group, was that what they didn't want was for the process to establish a Chair to take a long time and nothing to happen during that period. So they've been working on what it is that they might be able to do, including looking at issues and areas of, areas of non-agreement around, for example, the front wall. So I'm really happy to report that it's been a really positive period. Small steps of progress have been made, and everybody, I think, is feeling very positive about it going forward.
Thank you. Do you have any questions? councillor McGowan.
Certainly a quick one. It's just to say, how long do you think it'll be until the Chair is imposed? Did you have a closing date on applications?
The closing date has passed, and there was, there were a number of people who approached, approached us interested in the role, and then one application was received. The partnership, the groups that would be involved in the partnership met the applicant, and I think they're now reviewing and asking clarification questions. So I don't have a date for you, but I would anticipate it being as soon as it can be done, because it is something that everybody's very invested in.
Yeah, what I would add, as I sit on that Subcommittee, is I was very encouraged that these partnership meetings are happening on a fortnightly basis. So I'm pretty sure that the Friends of Graves Park and the Rose Garden Group will not let the momentum drop. So thank you for your report, and we'll duly note it. Agreed? Thank you. Our final item today is item thirteen, which is a verbal update on the launch of the Sport and Leisure Strategy. Thank you for your patience.
Right, hello everyone. I'm Kate Clark. I'm Service Manager in the Sport and Leisure Team. I'm conscious of time. I've got a video to show as well, hopefully. Is that still okay to kind of do that? It's about ten minutes, that video.
We've got twenty-five minutes.
Oh, I've got plenty of time there. Okay. And we want, I wanted to provide an update today, following the launch of our Sport and Leisure Strategy in December. I know some members of the committee came along to the, to the launch and were able to watch the video there, but we wanted to share that with you. So back on, on December the twelfth, we came together with partners, local and national partners, including Sport England and also stakeholders across the city, to launch our Sport and Leisure Strategy, and also to kind of celebrate some of the work that's been taking place across the city, getting our communities active. In terms of our Sport and Leisure Strategy, just as a bit of an update, we developed that following comprehensive consultation with communities across Sheffield, and it very much kind of contributes to the ambitions of our Move More Physical Activity Strategy as well. So the ambition of our Sport and Leisure Strategy is to have facilities, services and activities across the city that are modern, welcoming and inclusive, and meet the needs of everybody in Sheffield, encouraging more people to be more active more often. And as I say, we developed that following a comprehensive consultation, particularly talking to target communities that we know are often not able to access facilities or maybe less active. And it gives us a framework really for the redesign of our indoor and outdoor sport and leisure facility offer, which will help us to contribute to wider public health outcomes of reducing inequalities in health. We also will be able to contribute to some of our carbon net zero targets through the rebuild of some of our sport and leisure facilities, making those more sustainable. And we'll be contributing towards the city goals and those within the new council plan that's coming out. Our strategy document, I think, hopefully you've all been given a copy of this, is based around six kind of key themes, which are all kind of linked to the Move More Physical Activity Strategy themes as well. Those are around investing in an active Sheffield, so investing our, our kind of available resources in our indoor and outdoor facilities and making them more accessible, and prioritising the access for those with kind of least resources. Inspiring sporting achievement, which is looking around bringing sporting events to Sheffield and maximising the kind of social and economic benefits of those, and also working with national governing, sport, national governing bodies, communities, volunteers, clubs and so forth, to kind of develop sporting pathways and make those accessible to kind of all communities, not just people who have kind of got more, more resources. We've also got themes around active communities, which looks to kind of provide local activities in, in kind of more, kind of community activities, so people can get active in places that suit them. For example, kind of outdoor open spaces or in kind of facilities within their neighbourhoods. And that, that would also kind of focus on those people who are least likely to be active. The other themes are around active children and young people, ensuring we're kind of providing physical activity opportunities for, for children at school and kind of, working with youth services and also in early years to support educational and kind of social development as well as physical and mental health. Active environments, which again is looking both across our kind of open spaces, our active travel networks, and supporting kind of active travel across the city. And finally, we have connecting health and wellbeing, which is working with both physical activity and sport organisations and healthcare partners to kind of connect them up and ensure we can kind of provide opportunities that benefit people's health by getting them more active. The six strategic themes are also kind of underpinned by a number of principles which we kind of consider when we're designing our, our kind of new facilities, our new activities. And those include particularly kind of important around tackling inequalities, making sure we invest resources and focus activity where we can have the biggest impact in reducing those health inequalities across the city and reducing that kind of gap in life expectancy across the city. And also around collaboration, because this is very much a strategy that we cannot deliver alone. We know we're not always the experts, so working with our colleagues in the voluntary and community sector, in the public and private sectors, to deliver the strategy is crucial really to that. Just in terms of next steps with the strategy, so we've set out within the Sport and Leisure Strategy our themes and commitments under each of those themes. What the next step is now, is for us to develop an implementation plan, which we're currently starting to work on with partners. So we'll be pulling together that implementation plan, which will set out actions under each of the commitments. Those will be with partners involved in that as well. And I think what we would like to do is bring that action plan to a future committee meeting for discussion with members as well. Alongside that action plan, we'll be developing a monitoring and evaluation framework, working with colleagues at Sheffield Hallam University and also the National Centre for Sport and Exercise Medicine. So we're working closely with them at the moment to have those discussions and develop that, that framework alongside the implementation plan. So I suppose the key thing, if people haven't got any questions, we wanted to share today was the video that we showed at the Sport and Leisure Strategy launch, which actually demonstrated a lot of the work we're doing with, in collaboration with partners across the city. So I don't know if you want to take questions, any questions now and then play the video, or video first and then questions?
I'll take the comments and questions. What I would say, at that leisure strategy, you talk about life expectancy. I think the sobering fact is that if you live in a area of deprivation, you are likely to have a five-year life, minus five-year life expectancy, which I think is a, and that's, like most cities, the borders, you know, boundaries are onto affluent and challenged areas. And I think you could be living, two identical people in terms of age could be, have a five-year difference in their lifespan, which this is, goes somewhere to address, hopefully. Question? councillor Elliot.
Thank you. Thanks for that. I couldn't make it to the launch unfortunately, so I'm looking forward to seeing the video. Just in terms of contributing to carbon net zero buildings, I mean, that's obviously an easy win, I think, in terms of making those buildings sustainable and also, you know, in terms of the lifespan of them with energy costs going up. So just wanted to mention that. But my question was around food, because we've had a few meetings with young people who've come to us very, very worried about the lack of healthy food in some leisure centres. And that's obviously contrary to, you know, having a healthy lifestyle. And they showed us photos of vending machines with brand advertising all over them, you know, strategically placed in the most visible places, and then you've got the water coolers like hidden away where no one can see them. So obviously, you know, in terms of connecting health and wellbeing and the bigger picture, you know, that is a bit of a strange inconsistency when we're talking about health and wellbeing. We need to include food and drinks in the conversation. So I just wondered, have we got any further with specific terms in the contracts, so that, you know, we can have some sort of regulation over that?
Yeah, thank you. Yes, within the specification that has gone out, that are currently out to tender at the moment for the new operator for the facilities, and particularly with the Sport and Leisure facilities, we've included some information within there in terms of high-fat, high-sugar products and how they are kind of sold and advertised. We've also included various kind of recommendations on how we would like them kind of displayed as well. And what we've committed to as well with the young people, I think you're referring to from the Bike Back campaign, is to have that ongoing dialogue with the operator. So when we've appointed the new operators and they're, we know who they are, there'll be a mobilisation in addition to what has been included in the specification. And there's also some work, and forgive me, I'd need to find out a little bit more detail, because I'm not as close to that, but with, working with Nesta to carry out some pilots within, with the new operator in the facilities, when they kind of come into operating those facilities, pilots relating to kind of healthy food and the other kind of choices and things within the leisure centres. So yeah, I mean, we're aware of that information they collected, and the photos were, yeah, definitely a bit of a shock in some places. So that, that new specification will include a lot more, I suppose, teeth in terms of what we require in terms of a healthy food offering in the Sport and Leisure facilities.
That's good to hear. Thank you.
Take a last question, because we are getting close to our time limit. I would like you to see the video. councillor Rice.
Thank you. I've been looking through this Sheffield City Council Sports and Leisure Strategy little booklet. I am a great lover of outdoor sports, trail running, hill walking, got myself into climbing. And I'm just wondering whether we've kind of looked beyond our borders, because we've battled against High Peak District Council, but also Derbyshire Dales District Council. I know of a number of people, especially towards the west of the city, who will see their, kind of, their exercise, their kind of outdoor and healthy living engaged more with those councils as part of the Peak District. Have we reached out to them and see whether we can build a collaborative health and wellbeing strategy around the Peak District?
Yeah, I think quite a lot of the work we do around the outdoor city and those kind of linkages, have those conversations with, with them. So yeah, they will, they're kind of partners within the Sport and Leisure Strategy. And yeah, certainly in terms of kind of walking, running opportunities, some of our run routes run out, kind of go on a sign posted around various kind of areas out in the Peak Park. And yeah, so there is the risk of working particularly around outdoor recreation. Yeah, I think the other thing that kind of came strongly out of the consultation was that some, some areas of the city may be, there isn't as much kind of outreach into those. So someone in the east of the city may not kind of travel or have the means to travel out there. So obviously, we also work closely with the school sports provision in terms of Thornbridge Outdoors and linking into those kind of opportunities, so children can, can kind of go out and experience the Peak District who might otherwise not have the opportunity. So yeah, the relinquish is there, and certainly as part of this, we'll be kind of trying to develop those more.
Thank you very much. Do you know how long your video actually is?
My video is about ten minutes, possibly eleven. Is it set up on yours to go?
In that case, thank you for your report, and let's see the video. And just in case it runs over by a minute, can I just have your permission to extend this up to half an hour? Not that I want to by any means, but I don't want to have to cut the video off right at the end.
Is it a function to run the video at one point two speed?
Let's not waste any more time, and crack on.
My name's Levi from Sheffield City Council, and I'd like to welcome you to a Parson Cross celebration event that we have here today. What we're looking at today is a huge community event, celebrating all the work that's happened in Parson Cross over the last twelve months. Work that includes new bespoke rugby pictures for rugby union and rugby league clubs in the area. This incredible Croyds Court surface for children's play that's open and free to access all the time and lit in those winter months when they can't access it due to lighting issues. We've also refurbished the pavilion area to bring in a bespoke classroom, youth work engagement, community hub engagement, and just generally brighten up the area to give people the opportunity to properly enjoy Parson Cross.
Stocksbridge Pool was saved by the community ten years ago. They now run it, surviving on grants, local fundraising and the money people pay for sessions. Now they're getting seventy-eight thousand pounds from the government.
It can be used for, to subsidise the gas, electric and biomass pellets, and also for the pool chemicals. It still will cover the full cost because the increase just in gas and electric on last year is about ninety thousand. But it's a heck of a long way.
The community say it's a vital facility with benefits beyond the obvious health effects.
It creates lots of little networks. The activities here aren't just the activities that you do here. There are all the people you meet, and it's a real sense of community. It's fantastic.
It's going to help people enormously. Like, it's going to encourage people to come to the pool. It's going to encourage people to stay fit, stay healthy, and it's good for mental wellness. mental wellbeing as well.
Huge legacy piece around young girls coming, seeing their stars play in front of them. There'll be a lot of coverage on terrestrial television and we know that these big tournaments in the last few years have really pushed the women's game forward. So yeah, to have that in our own country is a massive piece.
You know, it's fantastic, isn't it? I think to come here today and to see so many young girls and boys just enjoying playing football and whether that's they want to go on and play at a professional level or whether that's just going having a kick about with mates, it's just great to see them sort of wanting to play the game and enjoy the game.
Wheelchair Rugby League is literally rugby league in a wheelchair, so there's contact in it. It's really fun to play as well.
Well, wheelchair rugby league is the most inclusive sport that I've come across. We've got young people, their parents, we've got people with disabilities, able-bodied people.
When you're on the court playing the game, it's just like the best game ever. I can't describe it, it fills me with such joy.
Without the create-by-grant, wheelchair rugby league wouldn't have existed in Sheffield.
And with the funding, we were able to buy the chairs, start-up equipment and some money for the facilities as well. Without it, we wouldn't have been able to run it.
Everybody dreams of putting on an international jersey to be picked and to represent Ireland as just done myself confidence the world good. I can't express how it makes me feel, it just fills me with pride.
Focus of this project for Trent is really about getting kids into riding, enjoying cycling, mountain biking. It's also about getting them to learn some things about environment. It's also about extending cycling to their families, so getting more people involved across their families and their friends.
Having the bikes has been absolutely brilliant because there's a lot of children who don't own a bike or families can't afford a bike. We've had some children who are refugees, they don't have enough money in the household. And this is where it's been valuable, for the bikes, for the children to learn to ride.
Them giving these bikes has made a massive impact. We wouldn't have bothered enough to afford that because of funding in schools, et cetera. The kids now are being able to ride and some kids have been able to ride a bike and now they've come along and had a go at the bikes, riding it. And Andy's delivered, him coming in and doing his deliveries, given them opportunities to show that they can do mad downhill mountain biking, they can do racing, they can just go out for a ride and prove it. This opportunity that Trent's given is great.
I love it, it's like so really nice because you have the opportunity to actually ride the bike and go out and run and go and run something like that. And you also push the coach.
Our group of all, in Sheffield, our people in the area is equally active. We have two sessions a week, a third in the recreation centre, we will be on tour in the Rock Lake Park in this session.
Heard of the sessions via word of mouth and I've been attending the sessions since from the start, which can join at the moment and hopefully continue.
The main point upcoming here is to keep fit and obviously to socialise with others after the sessions, which will catch up on, you know, local events and news and stuff like that. So it's a good gathering, good for the mental health, for the body as well.
Only your friends play football, have a discussion, yeah, it's good social, I like it, yeah.
It has immensely supported my social skills, but sometimes we've got no time to go to local, have some local community events. So this set up our sessions has immensely supported my social skills, my health, my fitness.
Notwithstanding that, I think it demonstrates how much is going on in Sheffield. It's a big project pulled together by a very small team. How many are in the team, Kate?
There's 11 of us because we've just had a new officer start. But yeah, I mean, all of those projects, very much us working with our partners in the voluntary community sector, public sector. So yeah, it's something we can't do alone and yeah, all of it has to be done in collaboration. But yeah, we've got some really fantastic networks across Sheffield, so that really helps us out in terms of managing to deliver all of this.
The clock's just struck. Thank you all for your time today. We've covered a lot, as always. Thank you.